I'll hold this meeting of the Goshen Board of Education to order. Ms. Schinkel, you'll call the roll.
This is Pat Rocky.
Here.
Mr. Arera, here. This is Casey.
Here.
This is Gray.
Here.
Mr. Bente.
Here. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Ms. Schinkel, call the roll.
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Arera. Yes. This is Casey.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bente.
Yes. We'll have a moment of silence where we remember the feet rolls down in Eastern Kentucky. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Edwards to lead us in the pledge.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible first and ever.
At this time, I'll ask Mr. Brian Bailey to introduce the new staff.
Well, I'm just going to introduce the principals, but I just wanted to say real quick, it's awesome to see so many people here, families, new teachers. We're fortunate here, Goshen, we've got a great staff. And when we add to it, people like this that you're going to be introduced to tonight, makes us even more of a special place. We've got a great group of new teachers here, whether they're experienced or first year. I'm going to let the principals kind of go through each building. We're going to pull their slide up real quick. Principals are going to introduce the staff member and then staff member, if you brought somebody with you tonight, you'll be able to introduce them. We will have a couple that are probably out on our sports fields, are doing something else coaching wise tonight, so there's a couple slides that'll pop up. We'll just introduce. So, again, I'm excited to have you guys all here, ready to get going with new teacher orientation Thursday, and then get you off and rolling Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday with staff and Thursday with kids. We're going to start with Mr. Smith and Mark Cook.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Smith, Principal Mark Cook, and this is Shalee Stevens, our Assistant Principal. And we at Mark Cook are extremely excited about our new hires. It has been probably five years maybe that we've hired. So, we're a little bit out of the hiring game. And when we come across such a strong pool, it is very exciting. And I'm proud to say, our positions became open, we had some veteran teachers that moved on to leadership positions, and some retirements going on, and it ended up with these five spots. So, we have been very busy this summer hiring some incredible people. And I also want to say, meeting a lot of spouses out there, family members, it just reiterates how strong some of these, these young ladies are. Because it quickly comes across those family values, that strong support system that each one of you have. So, it's been a pleasure talking with you. This evening, we're going to ask each one of you to come up here so we can see your lovely face. And then, as Mr. Bailey was saying, we're going to ask you to introduce who you brought with us. So, we're going to start out with Ms. Brianna Hamilton, who is hiding in the back. All of our teachers, with the exception of one, will be in our first grade, all first grade teachers in here. So, Brianna, you get the joy of introducing your lovely family.
Okay. Right there's my brother, he's 19. And that's my mom, and that's my dad.
We want to say welcome to Brianna. We're going to gather the whole crew up here.
All right, next in the back is Kelly Cooper. And Kelly's coming to us from Sycamore Schools and Colrain Schools. Can you just stand right over here? Okay. And we're very excited to have her also as another team member of the first grade. And if you would introduce your family, please.
I did not bring my family tonight, they could not make it.
She was a busy mom dropping off daughters. Yes.
That's a quick introduction.
Yeah.
I like it. Next, we have No Signal. I think we ought to hire this person. I'm now convinced that, still no signal.
And there's nothing on the technology. There it is. He did this.
There we go.
I mean, I sweated for a minute and it came on.
I'd just like to make Mr. Bailey nervous. Randy, if you want to head on up. This is Ms. No Signal, Amy Anderson. It's a very recent change of last name that I am having a terrible time getting used to. So, Randy, you want to introduce all of your family with you, some in the back, some in the front?
Yeah, I have my mom, Christy, my husband Pierce, and then my dad, Joe, and then my brother Grant in the back.
Welcome.
Kailin Henderson, come on down, you're the next contestant. First grade. Kailin's coming to us, graduated from Milford High School. And she, this is her second year teaching, so she's not a newbie, but she's a newbie to us. So, welcome. Can you tell us who you brought?
Yeah, I brought my mom and my dad and my sister Haley and my husband Nathan.
Thank you for being here.
April. Come on up. April Wells is our final first grade teacher. April was with us last year, did some student teaching in the building, and was a quite easy transition into that first grade position. So, April, tell us who you have with us this evening.
I've got my younger son Everett, he'll be in second grade this year, my husband Jason, my older son Gabe, who's a senior this year, and then my mom and dad.
Welcome. Lovely crew, Mark Cook, and I'm extremely proud and excited to get started. Thank you, ladies, for letting me do a little embarrassing stuff. Excellent job, thank you.
If it goes out, you're going to go from here. You know what this slide is? Love to have that work. When it goes out, we're back and forth. Seems to be when I touch the button.
I'm not nearly as funny as Troy, but our first person is Tiffany Singleton, you could come on up. She's going to be one of our third grade intervention specials, she's got quite a bit of background, we're really excited to have her on our team. Can you tell us who you brought with you?
Yeah, I brought my son Silas and my husband Matt.
I'm Catherine Peters. Catherine is joining us with her fourth year of teaching fifth.
Fifth year.
It's going to be fifth, yes, sorry, I got it. And she'll be on our third grade team pairing with Ms. Schinkel, we're excited to have her. Can you introduce your husband?
Oh, this is my wonderful husband Brad.
And Mackenzie Shepherd. Mackenzie's got the very daunting task of not only teaching third through fifth grade music, but also sixth and eighth grade music at the middle school. This is her first year, so we decided, like, what else can we throw at her?
Right.
Thank you for joining us, Mackenzie.
I didn't bring anyone.
We also have Julia Margalish, she'll be rejoining our Spalding team, she actually taught third and fourth grade online for us two years ago, and she'll be back as a fourth grade language arts teacher, but she's not here this evening. So, we're excited to have her back. Thank you, ladies.
All right, good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Wendy Flynn, I'm the principal of the middle school. And like Troy, I'm super excited for all of our new hires. Several of them have been in the building and are transitioning to a new role. Several are Goshen alumni, so, super excited to welcome them to the GMS family. We'll start with Logan Brand. Oh, sorry. Logan is a Goshen graduate and a Bearcat, which I love. And he's going to be teaching sixth grade math with us at the middle school. And did you bring anybody with you tonight?
No, I'm here by myself, I came from Coach.
He's, yes, he is our junior high football coach and is going to be helping with the ladies' basketball teams up here at the high school, so, super happy to have him. Penny Turpin. Penny comes to us from Mount Houthi, and before that, she was in Arkansas. But she is a hometown girl from Blan Chester. So, we're super excited to have her here at Goshen with us, she's going to be teaching eighth grade at UCLA. And I think she brought someone with her.
Yeah, I brought my husband David.
So, Julie is one of those that we're super excited to have on as an intervention specialist. She's been in at the middle school with us for five years already as a math tutor and has done a phenomenal job, so, we're super excited, she's already part of our GMS family. She did bring a couple people with her tonight.
I brought my daughter Haley, she's a senior here at Goshen, and then her boyfriend Connor, he just graduated from Goshen. The rest of the family, they're at football.
Next up is Arlie Smith. Arlie is going to be teaching seventh grade language arts at GMS, also a Goshen grad. And I know she doesn't want me to tell this, but dad's Troy Smith, so... Don't judge her on that.
I also brought my lovely mother, Missy Smith.
All right, next. Tyler Downey. Tyler's going to be teaching eighth grade science on a team with actually Penny and Kristen Sirkamp, who's new to us, returning for her second year. Tyler comes to us from Hamilton City, and he came highly recommended from Miss Andrews, we're super excited that he followed her and came out here to join us, he's going to do a phenomenal job. Hoping that he'll be coaching baseball in the spring, and we're glad to have him. The new hires for Goshen Middle School.
Okay, so there's a few that don't know me, my name's Stephanie Walker, and I'm the principal of the high school here. I have several new staff members that I want to introduce today, a couple of which are not here, as was said before. First of all, is Shane Elkin, and he is coaching football, so he's unable to be here right now. We're super excited about having him, you know, it's an interesting thing, at the high school, middle school level too, you have to find teachers and coaches. And that becomes pretty challenging at times, and we got very, very lucky this year, Shane being one. He comes to us from Milford, and he's teaching math as well. So, again, a math football coach, pretty hard to find, and we got extremely, extremely lucky, so, welcome Shane. Next up is Morgan Bryant. Morgan, come on up here. I have kind of an interesting story about Morgan. I'm kind of like a bad Penny, I think she carries me around with her unintentionally, I think, at times. I was actually her elementary school principal and her high school principal. And when she graduated college, I hired her here as a building sub. And she went away for a couple of years and went to Blan Chester, and we had an opening, and we knew we needed to have her back, so, the bad Penny is me, not you. So, it's, it's a great thing, I'm super excited to have her here. She is an English teacher, she's amazing, and I'll brag on you for a minute, you've written a young adult novel in 2020, I bought it too, it's really good. So, I'm super excited to have Morgan.
I brought my mother, Kelly, with me, and then I brought my husband Cory, and then I brought the newest addition to the family, that's Millie Jo, she turned nine months old a few days ago, so...
Stay up here, stay up here. Next up is Caroline Noble, and Caroline is not able to be here as well, she's a coach, so again, I got lucky again, is working with our tennis team. She is a first year teacher, she's a University of Cincinnati graduate. I know that there's another Glen Estee grad back there, Caroline also is a Glen Estee grad, and I'm only bringing this up because they have my husband as their principal, so... I'm getting old, or maybe he is. So, anyways, Caroline is going to be here as an English teacher, she's vibrant, she's fantastic, I'm so excited to get kids in front of her, I think they're going to adore her, she's going to do great things, so Caroline Noble. Next up is Miles Burton, come on up. Miles comes to us from Hillsborough, and he may be a familiar face, he helped out with our basketball team a couple years back. And we had a basketball opening, and we had an intervention specialist position, so Miles is coming in and really filling two of those roles for us. Something, and we've been getting to know each other over the past couple of weeks, his passion for kids really tugs at my heart, and, and I, and I love him a little bit more every time I work with him. And it's not always the kids that are easiest, sometimes that, that you connect to, sometimes it's the opposite, and that's, that's really impressed me with him. So, go ahead and share out who's here today.
I brought my girlfriend Becca, she's an intervention specialist and seventh grade this next year, so, I'm excited to be here.
Okay, next up is Ms. Haley Wei Cam. And Haley is coming to us from Hillsborough, two years, Sammy one year, then we stole her. And, and I'm super excited to have her here, she teaches math. She came in and had just a fantastic interview, and she walked away and we kept talking about her, talking about her. And we're able to go ahead and secure a spot here, and I think you're going to do great, great stuff. I'm excited to get you in with my math department, I'm excited to get you in with our students, she's going to be working with juniors and seniors. And some of those students are students that traditionally math has not been the easiest thing for them. And, and I, and I think you're going to be able to find a little crevice to get in there and have them at least respect math, maybe never love it, but... So, again, I'm super excited to have Haley here. Who do you have?
I brought my husband, his real name's Brandon, but everyone calls him Biggie. Kind of weird to introduce them sometimes like that.
Next up is the staff member of the four-legged furry kind, this is Mr. Artis. And Artis is with Kristen Walker, who is, I don't, I don't know the right word, his mommy right now. He lives with her, and, and I'm so grateful, actually, that she volunteered to do this. She is not a high school staff member, but she keeps him, well, I mean, his home is with her, and then his work is Goshen High School. He is two years old, and he has been training his entire life to come and work with us. He had, which I thought was very, very fascinating, he trained in a women's correctional facility. I'm thinking if there is a place that, that they need some love and TLC, he got some, some good work in there, there's something that he is after.
I know.
He is after you, he is after you.
I was going to see if you'd do a trick for him.
No, would you do that, would you do that?
Okay. You sit. Actually, I'll have you do this. Down. Relax.
Good boy. A little tiny funny thing, real quick, I posted last night a picture of all of our new staff members, including Artis, and I'm not putting you guys down or anything, but the dog got more likes than it. That means, but it's true. But anyways, this is Goshen High School, our staff, and we're super excited to get started.
He loves everybody, though. He loves everybody, he's a lover. Except your black aunt, I go for all night. He's like so furry. I can't get him to go to the house, it's like crazy.
Just a quick bet. He's the worst.
There's something, I don't know.
I will say to the new teachers, did you see where we're having technology issues and how fast it was fixed? We've got incredible, we've got incredible tech staff here on demand, that's fixed.
You send a text message, and boom, it's like that. Okay. That's not setting up realistic expectations. Okay, that's, for you new, new folks, that's, I mean, we've got another facility dog who's at the middle school, so, we're very blessed to have two of those animals that are, and our kids absolutely love them. So, if you've never seen one work, it's really, it's really a blessing. So, we're fortunate, we have people like Goshen Education Foundation, who helps us fund some of those projects too, so... So, next, I just have a special recognition, and then we're going to let everybody go who wants to go. And if you want to stick around and watch an hour more of meeting with 25 minutes from our star curriculum director. Jerry, welcome sitting around, but I have a special presentation. Yeah, so, I'd like the following individuals to come forward, Angela Crancer, Mallory Shirts, Jansen Sandlin, and Harley Crable. So, these ladies here, along with Doug Wyder Jr., who is not here because he is ill, will always have a special place in my heart. And probably everybody up here. So, it's kind of a harder, hard thing to talk about a little bit, but these individuals, on July 7th.
Six.
Six. Oh, you remember. At 3:07 PM, played an incredible role in our district, because, you know, everybody, you know, you talk about it, everybody can be a hero, people are. These are, these are individuals who work in our learning academy. And on that day, in the two rooms that are destroyed at the front of Mark Cook, these four individuals and Doug Wyder Jr. were there with our kids. And their watch went off, phone went off, yeah, because we didn't get a siren. And, you know, there's drills that we all practiced all those years in school, to get out in the hallway, to get on our hands and knees, and, you know, everybody at school never wanted to do those things. And certainly as adults, we don't even want to practice those things, because it takes time from what we do. But the most important thing we do is keep kids safe. And that's our first. I was in the building when that hit, and when the alarm went off, I did what every school administrator would do, and I walked, started walking that direction. And then within five seconds, I knew something was wrong. And I didn't make it down to that far until the tornado was already hitting us. And these individuals, by the time I got down there, they had those kids out in the hallway in a safe position. Glass was everywhere. I know, I know they'll remember that, glass was everywhere. Kids were screaming, yelling, but they had them calm as they could be. And within two hours, we had all the kids home, safe. But on behalf of our school district, the kids and their parents want to bring you guys tonight to be honored, so that each one of these people could shake your hand as well, and say thank you for a job well done. So, thank you for keeping our kids safe, thank you. So, unlike all that we did to torture everybody else, I won't make you make a speech. But again, on behalf of all of our kids and our parents, thank you so much for keeping our kids safe, because it's a miracle that although all that destruction was done in our town, and you picked the spot of greatest destruction, and that's where those kids were. I mean, so, I mean, it's the rooms that they're still repairing in front of Mark Cook, where they're at, so, thank you very much, ladies, appreciate you.
I'm just going to add a few things, we honored these wonderful employees up front here with the, for the kids at the tornado, but... You know, when we started about five years ago with the education foundation, we had a meeting one night, and we were going to think about what we were going to have of them. we had a meeting one night and we were going to think about what we were going to have of them. A little talk. A little slogan. Whatever it is, we try to make it better. And I think each one of these principals and Mr. Edwards and Mr. Bailey, for the new hires, they've started using the word fit. And I think they have all done an excellent job in hiring these outstanding employees. And we look for great things from you. The motto is make the best better. And I think each one of you can help us do that. And we welcome you to Goshen Schools. Thank you.
And if you'd like to leave now, you might, you can, you're welcome to leave. So Joe Steele would like for you to come out.
Welcome, everybody.
Last few days.
Reason that the, to have the full board.
Graduating.
And the dog. Yeah, you and the dog.
Thank you, guys. Have fun tonight. Good luck.
You know, Allison there, Abby, Ellie, and Brad. Yeah, but you, you, I know all these guys with daughters too. They all, she plays with her daughter, played with the ice. So they took my Uncle Ken. Zeke and Ken, they're married in my opinion. Morgan, Morgan Brown. Small world. Because Amy Schmippauer is our family member too. Yeah, since, I didn't know Goshen was all heavy in basketball. I didn't think that.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Teresa Scherzinger, our curriculum director.
Thank you. I'm praying this continues to work as I didn't bring paper copies this time. And I was back trying to sweat like, oh goodness, well, okay. That's another lesson for myself, always bring paper copies.
I do have one paper copy if someone wants to share.
Thank you. I want to give a few updates. I want to talk about summer school and college career readiness and then the report card. So summer school, this summer, we had offerings for kindergarten through high school. We had 173 students attend summer school. All of those students were provided transportation, breakfast, and lunch. And it was Monday through Thursday. We had 95 high school students come and earn 221 high school credits. We had 78 elementary and middle school students attend summer school. We focused mostly on literacy. We did do some math in grades five through eight. And we used ESSR funding to help us support the summer school between transportation and salaries and such. And we spent about $68,000 to work on closing some of those gaps in our students. Here's some data. We did a pre-assessment and a post-assessment to see if what we're doing works with students. And you can see on the right column, that's how much the students grew. Our class sizes were very small, especially in the elementaries. And they got a lot of individualized attention, reading help. And like I said, then some math help at the other grade levels. A lot of really good growth you can see from that chart. And then also middle school growth, where we focused on ELA and math. So a huge, a huge opportunity for a lot of our students. Danielle Stiles and Paige Barlow were our two summer school coordinators this year. And already, like the first day, they were thinking of ways to make it better for next year. When we got the ESSR funds, we talked about offering summer school for three years. So we offered it last year, this year, and then hopefully next year to help close some of the gaps for some of our students. So any questions about summer school? We also asked the teachers and students to do an exit survey, offering us advice or tips to make things better for next year too. So we're gonna dig into that with our summer school coordinators. And I know one of the things we talked about already is changing the name. Summer school has a negative connotation for everyone. So really making it something where they want to come, you know, getting transportation, they're learning. So that's one of the things I know we're already gonna do for next year. Switching gears, we're gonna talk about college and career readiness. We do a great job and it's interesting because I'm kind of living in that world right now with the transition of Mark to a new college and career readiness director. So I'm getting to see it firsthand for the first time in a long time. And it's really something to be so proud of, the offering that we have for our students. You can see from this information, it talks about how 126 advanced placement tests were passed at three or higher in our school for this year. So students who get a three, four, or five earn college credit for those courses. We had 21 college credit plus classes offered on our campus, where most of them are taught by our teachers. And that was the equivalent of 1,265 college credits earned by our students here on campus. So between AP and college credit plus, we have 1,491 college credits earned on our Goshen campus. You think about the way that translates into money, how much money that's saving families. I know a lot of students will go to college and they'll already be a sophomore because they've had so many opportunities here at school. And that's saving not only money, but it's also saving time for that student. They're gonna graduate a year earlier. Just so many opportunities they have here and it's really exciting. My son graduated in 2015 and I know we've added probably at least 10 college credit plus classes since then. And we're always looking to make it better. So our students have wonderful opportunities here. Any questions about college and career readiness that I may or may not be able to answer? All right, report card. It came, was it May? Well, that has happened since May. But I talked to you about what the report card changes look like. We're moving from an A to F system to a one through five star scale. We have some preliminary data in those areas that we talked about. There's gap closing, achievement, progress as value added. And that's an area we don't have data for yet. We have early literacy data and then college career workforce or military readiness is not ready yet. If you notice the bottom of that, that says that'll be rated in the 24, 25 school year. So we're still waiting for that. Remember, the achievement component is no longer did we get 80% or higher of our students proficient? This is all based on that performance index score. The early literacy change in that, in the third grade, a student who passes a third grade reading test actually counts into that component now where it didn't before. So that's just a little background. This is what our district report card looks like. So for achievement, we have four stars. For gap closing, we're five stars. Early literacy, two stars. And the graduation rate, we are five stars. I'm gonna talk about early literacy in a few minutes. But overall, I'm pretty pleased with what our results look like. For this to be the first year of a report card after two years of a pandemic. And last year, we know that we struggled with attendance of our students. A lot of them were, were out quarantined or with COVID or whatever. So I'm really excited about what our results look like. One of the great tools we have now is also we can dig into our report card and compare ourselves to like districts. So I have some of that data here in a few minutes too. But from a district standpoint, this is what our report card looks like. And then I'm able to go in by building now already and say, Goshen High School has three stars in achievement, five stars in the gap closing. Gap closing is how are we doing with our special population of students? Are our special education students growing at the same rate as our other students? How, so to have five stars in that area too, it's something definitely be proud of. And then our graduation rate, our high school worked so hard to make sure all of our students are graduating in that four-year timeframe. And they're a five star in that area. Goshen Middle School only has two components so far, achievement and gap closing. They have a four star and a five star. Spalding, four stars for achievement, five stars for gap closing, two stars for early literacy. And then Mark Cook has four stars for gap closing and one star at the early literacy. So in talking about like districts, this is what I pulled for that early literacy. Because obviously, you know, that's the one we start talking about right off the bat. That's the one that shows an area that we need to have the most growth in. So if you look here on this like districts, it shows you that, I have the grade scale on the next slide. So the difference in Mark Cook and Spalding is that Spalding, on their calculation, got points for the number of students who were on a RIMP at the beginning of the year and then who also passed that third grade test. And so did the district score. That's why we look a little different than Mark Cook overall. But as you can see, most of the like districts are scoring lower than we are in that area. And another thing, I pulled this clip from ODE. State law requires the state board of education to annually increase the promotion score on Ohio's state tests for grade three English language arts until it reaches proficient for the 24, 25 school year. So that rating scale has changed every year and it's got increasingly harder. And so what you're gonna see throughout the state of Ohio is a lot of one and two stars in this area.
If you go back to the last slide, the similar districts are the ones where they're the ones that they judge to be like you. It's the only data we have on any other districts. And everybody on that's either a two star or a one star for 20 districts. So I would anticipate that that's probably gonna be one of those data pieces from the state that's probably not looking very good.
It's not gonna look good.
Statewide is my guess. And they've built the measure. So they're the ones that set the target. So I mean, I, I don't know what that means other than probably that target was probably a bit unreasonable to me.
Yes. And I thought this was important to revisit also because you think about a student. What a RIMP is, the Reading Improvement Plan. So the first couple of weeks of school, a kindergarten student is given a reading assessment. And then that student is tracked from that year of kindergarten and then they're assessed again in the first grade. And so do they come off a RIMP or do they stay on a RIMP? So if you think about the students who are on a RIMP, especially during the pandemic, I showed you this, I think Mark pulled it up during our retreat, the difference in socioeconomic standing. So if you look here, it talks about our kids who are not from a socioeconomic disadvantage background had zero impact in testing on their state testing. Students who were from socioeconomic backgrounds, their testing has decreased from the pandemic. And we say, well, that doesn't surprise us, right? But if you think about that from a RIMP standpoint, a student comes in the first day of kindergarten, if they haven't had preschool, which in the pandemic, a lot of parents did not pay for because it was virtual. So they're coming in, they haven't had that foundation of preschool. And so we're trying to work to kind of overcome that background as well. So we do have some plans for early literacy. But overall, I'm really proud of our report card that looks like that, where we're majority of four and five stars for the first time with this report card especially. So during our retreat, we talked about, we had intervention for 46% of our students. We are adding a little bit more intervention in different places. I know we're gonna reinstate a couple of tutors at the middle school. We have, I don't want to steal your thunder, Mr. Edwards. I know he's gonna talk about this later in his superintendent update.
You go right ahead.
Okay, good.
I'll just skip it.
All right. But we also worked out a plan for our high school math. High school math has had a hard time finding a tutor because to be able to tutor students to understand high school math is a real challenge. So we've worked it out where we hired another teacher and the teachers are actually doing academic intervention. So as a teacher in math, I might have a bell of intervention where I'm pulling students and working on integrated math one. Or I'm pulling students and we're gonna integrate math two. Because who knows that content better than those math teachers who are teaching it every day? So I feel like that's a really good plan and that should really help to increase our math scores. And I know ELA is gonna try that in a couple of different areas this year too. Take one of our ELA certified teachers and having them work with the students. We also have a program where UC Claremont is providing five English tutors and five math tutors for free. There are students who are there who are earning some hours and they're gonna work under the umbrella of our math teachers and our high school English teachers. So we'll have five additional high school English tutors and five additional high school math tutors at no cost to the district. That was pretty exciting as well. We're gonna continue working on those title services at Mark Cook. As you can see from that early RIMP data, we have to fill in some gaps. That's why we decided to work with a literacy specialist who is focusing on literacy coach, just K through two, because that foundation of reading is so important. We need someone to focus on classroom instruction and training of our teachers. And you saw there are four new first grade teachers here. Our literacy coach is going to be the mentor for two of those teachers. And they're also gonna plan together each week until they've familiarized themselves with all of our resources. So that allows us to have a three through eight literacy specialist. We haven't had a literacy specialist working with middle school in a long time. So they're very excited about that. Which then I can move the HCESC coach. We work with Karen Crema. She'll only be working with high school English this year. So that gives them that undivided attention as well. We do have a new title teacher this year. Our previous title teacher went from being a title teacher to a principal. She got hired as a principal in a different district. So we have a brand new title teacher. We got really lucky. We found a veteran literacy coach and she's also a reading specialist who retired. So we've hired her part-time. She's working in the title room, offering services to our students. So really excited about the resources that she has to bring and her knowledge. And then our teachers are continuing that letters training this school year. Another exciting thing that we have working on our report card, we had 27 math teachers in grades K through five voluntarily do a math study this summer. It's a lot of, I mean, it's a high percentage of our teachers. They were engaged with our Hamilton County Math Consultants and they were reading chapters together. They were writing responses to each other. They were making promises about, you know, changes they're making in their academics and their teaching in their classroom. And it was really exciting just to see their conversation and their excitement for math. At Spalding, we moved a veteran math teacher to be the intervention teacher at Spalding. What we found is someone who understands all the standards at the building is really important. She's, she's always had great results. I think she's gonna be a fantastic person to be doing our math intervention at Spalding. We did add a intervention specialist at the high school, which I think is gonna help that financial literacy at the high school. Super excited about that class. I know a lot of parents have always indicated they felt like that was a need. So I think that's gonna be a really good opportunity for our teachers and students as well. And then of course, my favorite. I had to show you pictures of the book vending machine because I'm so excited about these. I think our kids are gonna be excited to read. We haven't gotten them filled yet, but they're actually like in the hallways now. And we have books, we just have to fill them up. So I'm super excited about that. I thank you for supporting that and our Goshen Education Foundation, who purchased, I think, $2,000 worth of books. We were able to kind of connect with a lady who is called the Cincy Book Bus. And she met those funds. We actually got $4,000 worth of books to fill up those vending machines throughout the school year. So I could not not show you those because I think they're so awesome. And I'm done with my nerdy moment. So do you have any questions about the report card or the book vending machines? I'd be happy to talk about that.
So the book vending machines, the books are free?
Books are free. So our students are, it's gonna be part of our positive behavior system. And when they've earned so many points, they'll get a coin and they can go to the book vending machine and pick which book they want. So, and it'll be free to the students.
And they, they take it home and that's.
Take it home, it's theirs forever. Yes. And we should have enough, between that and a couple other grant dollars that we use, we should have enough books, I think, for the year for every student to have at least one book. So.
Teresa's not lying. She was like a kid in a candy store.
I really was.
The candy that books came, I was like, oh my gosh, she's loving it.
Well, I was a language arts teacher, so that's near and dear to my heart, you know? That's the, I think, just providing books to students, they're gonna be excited about it. They're gonna be excited about reading. So I will be done with my nerdy moment. I know, can I help myself?
No, it's exciting. I mean, don't think, I mean, I think it's like they get tokens.
They get a gold coin.
Yeah, no, it's just like you go to a vending machine for a candy bar.
Yes.
Hit the button and be pretty cool.
They'll dispense it.
Does it kind of encourage them to pick one that's at their right reading level? that's at their right reading level?
And we tried to, I tried to make sure I ordered books that would be at their reading level for that building. The teachers probably will say, hey, this is the row that you probably should be buying from. But, you know, if they want to get a chapter book, they can.
So it's like a people vending machine? Like you should not pick the Snickers, Melissa.
You can try to convince Apple, but the...
I need guidance too, so.
That's right.
I have a question. So when teachers, when they move to a different subject, maybe I haven't taught that in a while. Maybe they move to, turn to ELA. Like, will the literacy coach kind of help them along?
Yeah. At Mark Hook, those four new first grade teachers are meeting with our literacy coach to write their lesson plans. She'll be in their rooms, working with them. And then the three through eight, we already have coaching cycles set up. So the coaches go in and model teach or they'll co-teach or they'll observe. And the teachers can say, I really want you to watch how I do a mini lesson and give me some feedback. So having two of them now, they actually have more time to be able to go into the classrooms. In the past, Megan, being across two different buildings, she did coaching cycles, but she wasn't in classrooms nearly as much as she had hoped. So I'm pretty excited about having both of them too. Very surprised.
I have a few questions. My first question is kind of associated with that, but we have a lot of new teachers. That first grade level, you know, thinking about how many new first grade teachers. Do we do like a mentorship?
Okay.
Or like make sure that they can sit in with a, in a classroom where that even, honestly, I think veteran teachers could learn from new?
We've been doing that a lot more the past school years, going into each other's classrooms. We work out in a couple of different ways. There's something called a pineapple chart where I could sign up and have people come in and watch. And people could say, I want to come in second bell. Our literacy coaches, that's part of what they offer too is, if you want to go in and observe one of your fellow teachers, I'll come cover your class while you do that. We've also had during PD days where school is still going on, we took teams of teachers in to watch each other. It is funny, I think sometimes teachers are more nervous about another teacher being there and they really learn so much from each other. Because really, who's the expert? The person who sits there every day and does the job that you do. So they learn a lot from each other. It's really exciting.
It starts off with like this Thursday, Mr. Bailey has a new teacher orientation. We spend a day with them, train them up on everything from safety to how to get help with technology and so on and so forth. Then new, brand new teachers have mentors. And that's a several year cycle.
Year one and year two.
Year one and year two cycle, that they get supported. But Mrs. Scherzinger and her team, and really everybody, I mean, that's what we're all about is trying to help support the people who deliver instruction inside of the classroom. And Teresa and her team, that's one of the things that they do. I mean, every, every morning, right? In a PLC with a group of teachers somewhere inside of the district.
We're so fortunate to have that time. You know, 6:50 at the middle school on Tuesdays, all of the ELA teachers are together. And we're, one week we're divided up into sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade. And then one week we're talking data as a whole building. And so that time is just so important, not only for veteran teachers, but for our new ones also.
Okay, good, that's exciting. And then my second question is coming from higher ed. You're right that obtaining all of those college credits very early can be really beneficial if it's purposefully done, right? And so do we do any kind of, I'm going to use nursing example because I'm kind of an expert in that area, but say you have a student interested to go into nursing and really they could get that whole freshman year out of the way, but only if they take very specific classes. Otherwise, you know, they're going to have to take AMP in order to progress onto anything else. So it doesn't really save them any time or money, kind of thing. Do we do anything early on to say, like if I'm a college student interested in this, I know I want to go to UC? Like, we should do X, Y, and Z or have these classes, like look at these classes first because that is going to advance you.
Yes. We do, they take a career survey, I want to say in eighth grade. And so there's conversations about that when they're scheduling. What we found, I think, is it's so hard for them to know.
Yeah.
And then I think those experiences that we've developed for our students to do internships, that really has helped. And then they can say, okay, if you want to do this, here's what you should be taking. And a lot of our college credit classes start their freshman year, except for that UCIT program. They'll get one class in, but most of them are definitely the higher level courses too.
And we've started the process here, you can see.
Yeah, I remember that.
We've started this and it's just in its introductory phases. Are you interested in humanitarian? Or excuse me, humanities or public service fields? Well, here, if you want to go a four-year college path, here's some of the things that we have that we suggest you take two-year career workforce. I mean, so we're starting to have those conversations and try to be purposeful. One of the hard parts is, I mean, heck, people don't know what they want to do when they're 23, less or less when they're 14.
Right.
But we're at least trying to have those conversations.
Good. We're also reinstating the Warrior Up Bell. I think that's going to be part of those conversations too. We talked about the business advisory, using some of that time to talk to kids about what you want to do in the future and here's some offerings. So we're trying to weave that into that bell as well.
I just think it's so beneficial to have that college and career readiness, even if it's like the career part, right? Like, you know, today you can walk right into a career field making decent money, right? If you have the right contacts and we have a lot of those within our own community. So just really excited to be a little purposeful about that. And I think we do, I agree. We do a great job when I talk to other schools and other people. We are, I think, Goshen, doing a great job on that.
In fact, honestly, we give a lot of phone calls.
Yeah.
Last year in particular, I got a lot of phone calls from superintendents from other districts asking to borrow or talk to some of our people. But many of the stuff is in introductory phases here. Mr. Dubs will be working with the high school staff and Mrs. Scherzinger to take that stuff a little bit further.
It's exciting.
Yeah, to build on what you, not to interrupt, I know you have another question, but I think that chart is very nice. And I, I want to leave it to my kids to like schedule the right classes. I just wonder if there should be more. I know there's like freshman orientation where you kind of get, okay, you need this many credit hours. And then that's it. My kids schedule their classes. They're excited next week to find out. But to be perfectly frank, I don't know what they're taking. And I may have, you know, I think it's a fine line, right? Some parents want to be more involved and some don't. I mean, you don't want to tell your kid he has to take an AP class if it's not, they're not interested in it, but I think...
I think, yeah. I think during that scheduling process too though, they sat down and had conversations with counselors or their teachers because there's prerequisites and people looking at it saying, okay, you're taking, you know, college prep math. You shouldn't be, you should be pre-calcantric. So those conversations are there to foster that so that they're not just scheduling randomly.
Yeah.
It's in that matrix of what's your goal, what's your next step. So there's pieces of that in there that maybe parents don't see at that scheduling time, but they are having those meetings.
Maybe they could just, maybe, I don't know if they're...
It's about parent, other side.
Open nights or, I mean, I don't know.
We actually have several nights and we've been videoing them. And one of our problems is parental attendance.
Yeah.
I mean, to be honest, so we started videoing last year. And those, we would send those out via Facebook and then email. And Mrs. Walker included them in her newsletter. And there's, it's just, and people are busy and I get that. You know, they tend to attend as an eighth grade parent
Yeah.
at that middle school when they're scheduling over here. That night we get good attendance and the more we go along, you know, getting them, you know, interested in coming back, you know, is a challenge. If you have any fantastic ideas for that, I will take those because last year we took to videoing and I think a lot of our videos did get a second one, which is good news. We videoed everything that we did, pretty much. And we offered virtual options and in-person options at the same time. So.
Okay, something to think about.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll take creative ideas.
It is daunting as a parent though.
Yeah.
It must be a daunting, I don't know.
I actually, so when, like, when we get a parent email, it's typically done through final forms, right? But I think it only goes to the primary parent. So like, what we did is I signed up me as a primary parent under one kid. Signed up my husband as a primary parent under another kid. However, he doesn't always forward me that email. We are working on that in our own household. But I wonder, is there, could there be a way in final forms that, but like it always goes to all parents or like you can indicate who it should go to? I think that would be beneficial
Additional emails.
For the communication, right?
Good question.
Especially for those kids who have multiple households.
Or, right. Like, everybody needs to know.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be communicated through one parent.
Good question.
So I don't know if we can look into that, but I think that might help in the parent attendance area.
I got a question.
Uh-oh.
Back to the first slide, I believe, Teresa, about math growth in summer school. Whoever you had teaching that math, four through eight grades, looks to me like they've done an awfully good job.
They did, yeah. But they had really small classes.
Right. But by the time that eighth grader gets to high school, that should show up hopefully this year as a better grade.
And that's why we did, and that's why we're doing summer school. Close those gaps, that's right.
I think, I think that's pretty good. 20% or what was it, 25%? Somebody's doing their job. Getting it through to them. I know it's hard.
Yeah.
But.
And I, and I think having them in a small setting, four days a week, and they had, I think, two hours of math? Might be an hour and a half of math. But I think it's really good growth. And hopefully we're plugging in some of the holes that those students had from pandemic or from being online or from whatever happened.
And the fact that they're engaged every day. I mean, how powerful is that, right? Because it's often that you don't see them for two and a half months and students don't do anything, right? And then slide a little bit, just from the lack of engagement.
Yes. Any other questions?
All right, thanks, Mrs. Scherzinger.
So that brings us up to number nine, old business, summer projects and tornado recovery.
So we'll just tag team that one a little bit. And, you know, again, we count ourselves blessed here at the school because we didn't suffer the damage that many families in our community did suffer. We set out a goal that we were going to be back in session August 18th. I think we're going to meet our August 18th deadline. We, I'll just go over a few items and then Mr. Schinkel can chime in, if he'd like to. And I'll let him update you on his projects this summer. We, I mean, first of all, our biggest damage is, first of all, trees. Our tech has been working on cleaning up our trees on campus. They are not all cleaned up. We set it for several phases. Get cleaned up, what immediately can cause some damage to somebody. Second, the trail, which we've not hit that yet, so that is closed. And third, all over campus, which will be more of a long-term plan. But we've got the first phase done. Second thing that is pretty much complete, we've probably got a few left because we keep discovering them, but the window replacements, district-wide. I don't know, what, 60, 70 windows at least?
Quite a few, a lot more than you would first think that the middle school, that really pelted really bad.
And we just keep finding them, you know, like, you know, the one with the rock embedded in it the other day, you know, hadn't been recorded. So we keep finding those, but we've got a group that's worked with us really well getting all those done. The AC has been repaired everywhere. The units have been set back and they're working. And right now, we're just finishing up items on like insulation, re-insulating pipes and things like that. So we're getting really close on that. The roofs have, are 99% water tight. In a school, they're only 99.5 ever. So we're at about 99% right now. Do discover new leak every time it rains. And with that, of course, we repaired ceiling tile, which they are working on replacing ceiling tiles that were damaged in the tornado in Mark Hook, in the middle school. But the roofs, we do not have a final piece from our, or from our insurance company yet. We'll probably be looking at some roof replacements in a couple of areas next summer. More to come on that at the middle school and the high school next summer. But more to come on that one.
Even if we do it next summer, is it still associated with the tornado?
Yeah.
And covered?
Yeah, and again, that's that approach of Band-Aids now, surgery later, so that we can get into school. Which leads us to the gym floors. And we are still not playing on our high school floor right now. We did meet with the floor company today and they are, the course of action right now as we're continuing, it's still got a ton of moisture in it and underneath of it. And if you go in there and if you're interested, you're welcome to join afterwards and you can go in. And it is kind of, it just kind of buckles and gets soft in different spots. So it is working what we're doing, which is keeping fans on it. It's gotten better every time. They were out this morning. It's still cupping, you know, hardwood floor. It's still cupping from the water, which is actually the biggest threat to play. And then we're keeping weight on it. We have skids of paper on it in several spots. We will reevaluate that again in several weeks. But right now, the idea at the high school floor is we're going to play volleyball because it's not on the court. We'll play home volleyball games as long as it remains safe and then we will move paper and the fans in and out of that gym. Thank God that gym is massive, so we can have gym class in it. There's nothing wrong with the auxiliary gym to practice in. And that is the plan for the high school gym floor right now until, so October tenth, eleventh, is our last home volleyball game, which at that point in time, I can't picture drying out anymore at that point in time. And, uh, that it is on the floor for basketball season. So something has to be done and there's a couple of options that can be done at that point in time. We'll have a break of several weeks before basketball. It's going with games and that we would come in at that point in time and do a temporary repair. I can't make a prediction, but if I had to, I would say that we're probably headed for a new gym floor there next summer right now. But it's still wet, we're still drying it. And maybe repairs will work. Now, but if we do those repairs in the fall, it could involve sanding the floor and the spot's not looking like a great gym floor. It's not going to match, but I'd rather the kids play on it, play on it safely than, than have it looking perfect than playing a fourth of our games.
They still have the dehumidifiers, the mats on the floor?
No.
Those weren't drawing much.
Not enough, not enough in what it cost the day. It was outrageous. So, um, and of course, insurance did pay for that. Insurance paid for everything, every decent stuff. And the middle school gym floor, we're still drying that one, uh, that's off of the gym floor there. And that'll probably be a more next spring, summer repair there. So, so gym floors and roofs, boys, that don't forget anything. We're going in, we're tired of talking about gym floors.
As opposed to it. I mean, the fences, we, we got a lot of fence work that's going to be done because they're down. They're supposed to actually do, the ones that tie the messes, church are supposed to start tomorrow, supposed to. And the pond's got damaged, middle school one's got damaged. And trying to look at just bulldozing that out. Because, I mean, the trees are growing into the fence. So it's really a difficult task. The thing that makes it even a little scary is like the insurance companies saying that we, we got a limit of twenty-five thousand for our trees. Well, if they're in the fence, if you're removing them there and the cleanup and that sort of stuff, that's not part of it. It's what's on, they said, once it hits the ground. So that's where we're trying to look at different stuff like that. I mean, it's been slow moving and like Mr. Edwards said, the, the roofs and the hardwood floor is our biggest thing. The thing with the roof is that in order to patch the middle school roof, they have to go so far, which is a big spend for them, and we'd still have to come back and replace it. And that's, it, it, because you get sent there in, uh, in the wintertime when it freezes and thalls. I mean, that's where they're really worried about some of those areas that got some impact on there, so.
And Mrs. Haas and Mrs. Tipton's rooms, the block is finally replaced. As of today, there are windows that are missing because of an error that was made by the, uh, the workers that were installing the block. Cut up the frames of three windows that shouldn't have been cut up, but it, uh, hopefully those will be in by the time school starts, but I'm somewhat pessimistic that those ones with plywood won't be in. But, and tile floors are coming, that work is coming starting tomorrow. So we're moving as fast as we can to make it, uh, August eighteenth. So, I mean, there's, there's little stuff. We're finding it every day. I mean, the scoreboard's got work to be done.
Yeah, that was just looking up. We got our pole ball pit, the band trailers, we're getting those redone, the scoreboards. We got new signees because some of our stop signs and speed limit signs got knocked down, so those should be coming up. They did fix our crosswalk. We finally got that signed and the twenty mile per hour signs. And I put in about our wrestling bats because they were getting leaked on, so I don't know if we'll get that or not. We haven't seen anything final on, for them. Then we had, it's like, uh, in the middle school library there are some books that got damaged. So we're waiting to get, see how they're going to give us, I mean, you know, how we write all this stuff up and how much we get. Because one of the little deals was, uh, like food storage. I'll just share this, I mean, I, it's crazy. I mean, and everyone was great. We got Gordon Foods, they gave us a semi and it was refrigerated. Six hundred and eighty dollars what it cost before electric came back on. Literally saved us thousands of dollars in food. So I sent it to our insurance company, so is this okay to pay the six eighty? And they're like, well, you've got food storage, food spoilage allowance of fifty thousand, but I'm not, I'll have to check if I can get a rental truck for this. So, I mean, I was just like, are you kidding me? It's like, so we, if we just let the food rot and spoil, we could turn it all in and that'd be allowable for up to fifty thousand as opposed to a six hundred and eighty dollar bill. It's things like that that sometimes you kind of like, really? But we'll get it all worked out. I mean, they've been working with us and stuff, but, uh.
And it's, and it is, and it is stuff, I mean, it is every day, there's something new, you know, I mean, weird stuff, middle school locker room, all the ceiling tiles, you know, everywhere in the boys locker room there and stuff. So the way that tornado hit that middle school. You know, it's just, uh, it's kind of crazy how, you know, it happens, that, that not explain, it's unexplainable. Mr. Schinkel, do you have anything else on facilities?
No, I, I mean, most of our summer projects, some of them kind of got put on the back burner just because of, uh, we kind of switched gears on stuff. So we didn't get to, uh, seal the high school lot, but they did do a lot of full-depth repair back there. They crack filled and, I mean, the cleaning crews got most, I mean, we're getting close to getting all that stuff done. So I think we're, I mean, we're getting there and everyone's working hard to try to make it happen. I mean, probably the unfortunate thing is like Mr. Edwards said, was this, Mrs. Haas, Mrs. Tipton's room, where that coriace block and then that put the flo, uh, you know, floor tile down. But we still got to wax it and get their stuff back in. I mean, that's, that's a challenge.
I'm guessing we have help for them since they're going to be on such a tight timeline.
I think everyone said, let, let us know when we get in there, we'll come, so.
I mean, you, you hit it as hard as you can. I mean, right, they're working on weekends, we're harassing people to get the work done over and over again. We're finding somebody else, we're throwing new help here. You know, it's just, there's a time process to, especially in today's labor market appears. Oh, I, yeah, and that's why, you know, if you think about how lucky we are with the damage, that's the path of the tornado that, uh, National Weather Service put out. That is the, the, the heavy strikes. It's easy to see why Spalding faced the very littlest damage of our buildings. So, I mean, the only thing we had there were shingles on the roof probably, weren't ours. I'm done, sir.
I got one question. Do we still have some things in the stories trailers?
Stories trailers?
You know, the ones we're renting.
Oh, yeah. I mean, all of this left, they all got stuff hanging right now.
But they picked up some of them that keep emptying, I guess, one.
So we were right.
Got rid of one.
We were right in the middle of getting deliveries out to teachers from that that requested a few odds and ends. And then next up was going to be kind of an auction and then we got sidetracked.
Those moved up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is funny because dumpster behind Marco took a tumble, you know, so they held up. And honestly, it's, I'm not sure when we're going to get to those because we got to get school open and that requires some work of all of our maintenance guys to, to move on from here. So those trailers are going to be sitting there probably for another few minutes.
We're going to try to get them out there as quick as we can, so.
Anybody for public participation? So we'll move down to new business eleven, uh, A, financial, one through eight. One through eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Sorry. I thought you were waiting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
This is Casey.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Venting?
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
John, just real quick, I put it on everyone's desk real quick. This just got approved today. This is our last thing from the Department of Taxation. If you look on their state stamp today, you know, I can, I can take it tomorrow to the county board of elections to get our bond issue on the ballot, which is due on the tenth. So, not like cutting it close, but we got it. So I just wanted to share that, that we did get that.
Okay, under new business B, personnel motions, one through eight. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Got one? Oh, okay. Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll.
This is Casey.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Venting?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Okay. B, personnel motions, number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, call the roll.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Venting?
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Same.
This is Casey?
Yes.
C, one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll.
Mr. Venting?
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
This is Casey?
Yes.
This is Gray?
Yes.
Brings us to Board of Education report. Mr. Gray, do you have anything?
I do not.
This is Casey?
All right, couple of things. So Great Oaks meets this Wednesday. I know you guys drive by live, so they, they're still updating most of their facilities. Opening day for their satellite programs in district office was last Friday. And then Scarlet, Laurel and Diamond opened this week and Live opens on the seventeenth. Kind of cool. One of our, uh, career tech program instructors for industrial diesel mechanics was awarded the Ohio ACTE Career Tech Teacher of the Year, um, last month, which was awesome. And then I just thought, I, again, I like numbers, so. They send out the campus enrollment study and I love this stuff. So, uh, they are at ninety-one point four percent, um, for retention right now on their level one. They have like a level one set of classes and a level two. So their level ones are just over ninety-one percent and their level two is just under eighty percent for retention for this year so far, for what they've got signed up. So that's pretty cool. And Mary Beth sent me the form because we have to start talking about who's going to take over the Great Oaks, um, the three-year term, starting in January. So I have that form, I will forward it to you guys and then we can start talking. We just have to fill that out. Mary Beth wants that back by the end of the year. And then the only other thing I had was, pretty sure it was on your superintendent's report and we've talked about it before, but that Housville, um, five eighty-three was signed, which gives us that flexibility for substitute teachers through June of twenty twenty-four. So, yeah, other than that, I think we are good.
Do they have graduations set?
For the Oaks? I'm sure they do.
I would like to make sure that we don't have a meeting.
Right?
On, especially.
We should tell the Oaks, but they.
I think we can in advance. I think we in advance maybe could change ours.
I think, because we don't, honestly, we never get those dates until April, so that would be a nice question to ask.
It would be good, especially like, we have a lot of graduates at live and I know it overlapped at live this year.
Yep.
Um, not that, at that time, we could have changed it, but.
They have to, I mean, we have our set, right? So I'm sure they have all of their set. So I'll ask Mary Beth to get those dates.
Yeah.
Mr. Arera? Uh, we had our public relations meeting the other day. We have our, on August twenty-sixth, we have our Veterans Cookout. It's a, that's the night of our first home football game at Toget Hillsboro. The cookout is five P.M. First responders are also invited and this year we're inviting the Ocean Service Department as well for their work for the tornado relief efforts. And whoever can kill these two flies, we're going to honor them as well.
I have one thing. The trustees did bless the, uh, new subdivision over here on Linton Road with the, uh, extra thing of they have to enlarge the lots. That's all I know. Of course, the, the cleanup, uh, you see the wood pile down there at the old green building. Man, the power. But, uh, that's the biggest thing, I think, pertaining to us for, as far as the trustees. You have anything, Melissa?
I don't.
We'll talk about the standing committees after we get done here, uh, and clear up some things. But other than that, uh, we're up to, uh, Mr. Edwards.
Mrs. Scherzinger gave, uh, two-thirds of my report, so I'm going to skip down to our fifth target area, which is communications. And, uh, we've sent a lot of parent emails out the past month. I'm also doing something new with the newsletter, uh, email newsletter, uh, the district, uh, this year. Our G News just went out, um, a few weeks ago. Our calendar, which is, uh, focusing on portrait of a graduate and some of our learners is at the printers and will be mailed out soon. And, uh, our billboard is up, uh, so we've had a lot of communications efforts going out. We've been a lot, doing a lot of things to important information from, on, uh, the Health Source Clinic to the Learning Academy by Champions, uh, changes in free lunch program from the federal government, our back-to-school webpage, tornado recovery, been trying to get a lot of information out to parents, working hard on that. Our athletic departments are using Team Snap this year, which should be a good piece at unifying, uh, their forms of communication with, uh, families, so we're excited about that. So just making hard efforts in the, the communications arena. The student development area, just a couple of things I want to point out, and those bullets there are the first, uh, three. One is the Health Source of Ohio Partnership and opening up this clinic where the occupational therapist used to be. That is not going to be open until probably mid-November. Just the permitting process, bidding out the contracts for them, because remember, they're paying for it. And, uh, all of those pieces, that's, uh, that's probably not going to be open until November. In fact, they've not started construction. They keep sending people out who are getting it ready, but, uh, they have not started any pieces of that construction yet. The, uh, summer feeding program, we fed almost a hundred breakfasts daily and two hundred lunches. And our SROs, I, I want to commend them for their summer efforts. Not only they had gym time available after our, uh, summer school and the, that they encouraged, uh, middle school and some high school kids to stay after for, or to come in for, who weren't in summer school. They also did, uh, visits to homes, uh, just checking on kids, banging on some doors and talking to kids and, uh, out some of our neighborhoods, took some, uh, you know, food and popsicles and treats out to some of our neighborhoods. It was a nice outreach by them, so. Under the, uh, other piece of other, um, you know, John did mention the three hundred and ten home subdivision that's been approved on Linton. So I think our steering committee on our facilities project, our bond issue is well underway. They had a real nice meeting on August second, which, uh, many of you were able to attend. Very nice turnout, uh, about forty people, uh, willing to help out. Obviously, we're willing to take the hands of whoever is willing to help out here. The, uh, the, you know, the strategy of, uh, let's get to people who most benefit from this to be aware and get that information into their hands, I think, um, is an excellent strategy that, uh, so the five committees again were finance and fundraising, communication, employee engagement, get out the vote and data and voter engagement. So, uh, I just, I don't know if any of you guys had thoughts on how that, uh, that you want to share from that meeting. I think we certainly have lots of follow-up to do. You know, getting information out to people. Reminder that we do have that, uh, September twelfth informational meeting and August twenty-third is our next steer, steering committee meeting. So I don't know if any board members or anybody had any thoughts you want to add on that?
No, I was surprised that, uh, eighteen hundred parents are not registered to vote.
Yeah.
Elementary, most of them were elementary.
Many of them were.
Many were.
Yeah.
Wow. I couldn't believe that. We sure need a thousand of them to make a trip and get registered. I just, I just thought that was a lot. But anyway, I thought it was good. I, I feel good about it. As I said at the meeting, uh, a man came up to me at church and said, uh, is the gymnasium on this plan? I said, no. He said, I've got you five votes. I mean, um, but I feel good about it this time. I'd really be disappointed if it doesn't work, but, um, I think that's a plus maybe. It'd be nice to happen, but, um, I, I feel good about it. I think we've got some good people on these committees, you know?
I think the focus on the academic space is important and key. There's definitely a need. I think people see it. So unfortunate that the tornado hit, but, um, encouraging to see like the community, the schools at the center of the support of our community during that time.
And Deborah, on that note, I, I should, I would be remiss if I don't commend the entire community on not only meeting needs there and our school staff, you know, heart, heart a lot of that, but also, uh, you know, every week we meet on what's called Long Term Recovery Committee. We've been meeting two meetings and I'm a part of that, Shelley Razio is a part of that, Brian's a part of that, along with township officials, um, you know, the greater organizations and churches because our tornado recovery is going to be a while. So, and it is unfortunate because certainly that requires a lot of effort and it should, you know, taking care of people, so.
When there's still a lot of need out there, um, I mean, that's maybe a thought, I know this goes off the fun, but maybe the school sharing the community, uh, posts of like, if you still have a need in these areas, reach out. I think people are asking generalized questions, but need to be directed in the right locations. So our school might want to share that from our townships.
Is, so that's additional communications, are the ones we've shared all, that we have on all of our web page and everything?
Um, I don't know. I would have to look. I think more recently they shared like if you still have a need, an unmet need, these are the numbers you call. Because now I know they're.
I said on those committees and I think we've been keeping up with that, but we might not be, something, so. I think one of the things is there are some monies that have been collected by the Ocean Education Foundation, like Clamont, things like that. One of the things on, uh, I think at one point in time, there will be a clear process on some of that that comes out of those. You know, out of that committee was, you know, if you still have additional financial needs that some organizations out there might be able to help, but that information is not going to be put out yet. I know that some people have been seeking it. Sorry, I distracted you from the bond issue.
I know, because now I'm thinking, are we doing an assessment like of all of our returning students just to make sure they have basic needs met returning to school?
We have, uh, if you want to talk about the, the survey that, uh.
I mean, the mental health team and Shelley and that group have, I'm with Officer Alcorn, growing around door to door. We know the community park that was hit, you know, the parks and that, out the houses. They've made visits. There's only, I think, two kids that are on account of, as far as where are they at. So we know where the kids are, we possess the needs. There's a lot of resources here for the kids. We do have a spot on our webpage where they can, you know, fill out a quick survey for some basic needs, um, if they're not met. So that's always been there, but I know between Shelley and that group and them building principals, that was a big part of our conversation on, um, days around.
Thursday, Thursday, our directors. You're saying the two kids, they're, they've been displaced?
Yeah, and we just have, we don't know where. So we're starting to get calls now that schools rolling around for some families where we've got some work to do with transporting kids from where they're at, working with different, you know, different districts to coordinate that transportation, um, to make sure that we're getting them here. So all that's coming together and then the needs, you know, of kids, yes. So, and we've had some. So, and we've had some great community partners, Heartland and, you know, the extra. Yeah, I mean, there's just been a bunch helping with school supplies and those needs and making sure kids are ready to go back to school, so. And we'll, I'm sure, just like windows broken, we'll find needs of the kids that we didn't know about. I think we've got the right resources here to help, so.
Back to the bond. The meeting last week was really encouraging, a lot of people there. And, you know, a lot of people interested who couldn't make it, who were like on vacation and stuff. So that was really encouraging and I like that we're really focusing on the needs this time.
Okay. So I'll go through the last place, so this bullet's open house. I did give you guys information. Those are next, it's hard to believe, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. That's in your calendar, the three weeks, you're certainly invited. Also, the first day staff meeting does occur on Monday morning at 7:00, 7:30, we breakfast. And 7:30 to 9:30 is the district meetings. They break out for three days of professional development. So I'd love to have any of you that can make it, that you'd like to make it for the first session. Southwest Conference is Thursday, October 13th, Green County Career Center in Xenia. Southwest, I don't know that we've ever been there, have we? So that's Southwest, Northwest, Northeast, Southwest District. So I do need to know if you are interested in attending that event. So. You would like to, Mr. Venting?
Yes, me too.
Mr. Herrera, you get these down?
Mm-hmm.
I'm interested, but can I follow up? I need to check mine.
Just let me know.
Yeah, I'll delay you now. Put me down and I'll let you know if it's different, but yes.
Okay.
So as many of us, I'll let you know.
Yes, you can all go. He just has, Mr. Schenkel usually just registers us, so we just need to know and, you know, let's say by the end of next week or something. Would that be good?
I haven't seen it, but I could look out a little bit.
Okay, so end of the month, how's that?
End of the month, end of the month.
And just reminder about the Capitol Conference and you need to have a delegate.
An alternate.
And an alternate, so.
I just went to training and they said that the new person is usually nominated to be the delegate. So I'm already prepared.
Have a nomination?
I nominate Melissa Pep Rocky.
It is quite long. If you don't want to do it now.
I second it.
I just, it'll be good. I need to, everybody's.
Open to learn.
Yes, go ahead, take it.
So.
And let's, let's have an alternate too, and then just vote on both of them.
Okay.
Out, out two alternates.
Okay. So everybody in favor of Melissa being our delegate and Bill being the alternate, Mr. Schenkel, will you call the roll? I think we need to vote.
Mrs. Pep Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Herrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
This is Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Venting?
Yes.
And the next one is committees. At this meeting, beginning of school year, you guys generally select committees. And I'll let Mr. Venting check, see if you guys want to make any changes. We have a list in front of us, if you want to just keep things the same. Melissa again filled in for John Gray's spot, so Melissa was new to two committees and didn't really get to, even to get to participate a whole lot, I don't believe, so.
Correct.
Do you want to leave it the same? Or does somebody like to change?
I'm good where I'm at, unless somebody really wants my stuff.
It's good.
Melissa, is there anything specific that you might be interested that's different?
Legislative liaison is so fun.
I heard about that, yeah.
Now, the bottom ones, we actually don't change at this point in time.
Right.
So.
So we'll leave it the same, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, one last thing. Several years ago, we started adopting the building. I ran it by each one of you privately. And I remember when I came on the board, Mr. Ryde was president and I think I had the high school. I think it would add something to our meetings. It would keep us informed of things going on at the different buildings. Maybe not every month you have something, but, you know, Donuts with Mom or Dad, muffins with Mom or whatever. So we don't have to vote on this, but is everybody in favor of adopting a building?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Okay. So I'm going to start with Julie because she's got the seniority and we have to start someplace. So, and we can change around, you know, it doesn't. Julie, what building would you like?
Well, I have a spot for middle school.
Middle school.
So I'll take that if no one else wants it.
Okay. Deborah?
I'll take Mark Cook.
Bill?
I'll take high school.
I'd love to have Spald, I was going to say there's kind of us, though, so you can make a double up.
They also tell you that the new member also buys dinner on all the Capitol Conference events.
Oh, my goodness, no. We did meet with the, the legal people and yes, I, I feel fine about that, so.
Okay. So we'll, we'll do it and see how it works. We can always change in another, you know.
I think the neat thing that Mr. Venting and I talked about was, is that kind of make sure that, yeah, there's somebody kind of popping their head in those, Donuts with Mom, Donuts with Dad. If everybody's busy, if you know it's your building, hey, I'm going to make an effort. Now, it doesn't mean that you can't go to every single building, but you go to all of them. You know, but it kind of gives it a little extra love and attention, would you say, Mr. Venting?
Yes, I think so.
Hey, and I would be amiss if I did not mention one thing here, and that's school safety, because I want to update you guys on just a couple of things. I apologize, but I skipped this part and I will dash through quickly. But this was my July meeting presentation and I never did talk about it. And as we get our tabletop exercises with the police department, the fire department, Clement County Communication Center, Ohio School Safety Center, our administrative team was there, our SROs were there. We did everything from practicing and rehearsing and reviewing our procedures with the entire administrative team, talking about what they are going to go out and retrain their staff on in August, to live action exercises of, you know, you know, we've got an intruder in the building and we just tell them to go spread out the building and then, then they get formed of the situation and they have to practice and react and put into place all the procedures that we do. Our teachers practiced that pretty regularly. We started off three years ago as in-service with a big one that we spent about a half day on. We decided we weren't going to do the first day of school like that anymore. So it, it doesn't, it sets a, you know, a certain tone, but we, it was an excellent day. We got feedback from the TSA, who was very impressed with many of our procedures. Our, our folks brought up the law enforcement and school staff's knowledge of that. They made some recommendations, mostly involving radios, making a few changes on our radio system that we will be doing. So it was really good. There's just a few photos from it. I mean, it was a big group. So it was, it was really a nice event. So, you know, I, I feel like we're going to carry that out into the school year. We did apply, I'm sure you saw that we did not get that school safety grant. We've applied for both rounds of that and been ruled out on a technicality and an absentee technicality.
Do you know what it is?
Yes, we know what it is. We finally found out what it was because quite frankly, after the first round, I tried to find out what it was and I was told we weren't getting any feedback, that they would issue some in general statements why you didn't get it. Well, that's not very helpful.
Wait, and who decides what was that through?
Ohio School Facilities Commission.
And they did not give any feedback?
They did not give any feedback. They did give feedback after the second round, when I made many. And it's, and the technicality, I mean, honestly, is not checking boxes.
I have a real problem with that. I mean, if that, I mean, is, is that what they're?
Yes, that's.
Everly see the value in, you know, protecting our students? Well, because they didn't cross a T or dot an I, we're going to.
Check a box.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the way I read that, it made it sound like those that didn't get it the first round were getting it the second round. I mean, because, because then I clicked into it and I'm like, I didn't think we got that. But I don't see us, I mean, I checked the list twice, I'm like, I don't have it.
Well, we're continuing trying to work. Without that last one, we've been told that of course we can apply for the third round, which we will. But so can the schools that got it in the first couple of rounds, so.
Really?
Yeah. So then we're on equal terms.
And they're getting like 50,000 a building, correct? Is that what I saw?
Up to, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's going to be up to 100,000 a building. And there's a lot of upgrades that you could do with entrances and cameras and for Jake and one, that, I mean, cost big bucks.
Well, that's when we were at Capitol Conference, I know, you know, Mr. Schenkel and I checked out a bunch of those booths.
Yeah.
So we had school security at that time. Like, oh, yeah, that'd be neat to have this or that, or, but now it's a whole new. Now it's like, yeah, I feel like it's a necessity to have this or that.
Yeah, and they, and honestly, they, I mean, this, the second process is supposed to be easy. This was not an easy process that we went through. Our SROs spent significant time on it. Todd and I spent a significant amount of time on it, turned it in. And it's a, it's a technicality, so. And we've not given up 100%, but I'm not so sure that I'm falling on some deaf ears.
We have gotten some other grants, though, that provided some extra cameras, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, I mean, and that's the thing, you know, when we put that in, there's a couple of buildings we wasn't asking for even close to the 50,000, because we've done a lot of investments in that. So we've really tried. I mean, it was real disheartening on finding out about like submitting this list and checking the box. And that was the only argument that I really had with the SEC person. It's like, you know what? These are true needs, whether this box is checked, because we had to send up a list of all the cameras that were being proposed. I mean, we had our.
So, I mean, honestly, we went ahead and spent money on some of these out of our general fund that could have been spent in other ways. You know, to, to meet this. And we have, we've got, every year we've gotten, oh, we've gotten Ohio Workman's Compensation grants that have filled some of those needs. We've gotten the Attorney General's Grants that have filled some of those needs and we'll continue to work at them. And we'll apply for round three.
But we're not even being greedy, though, we're asking for what we need, correct? Yeah, so.
And they are all facilities issues. It's not, it is not personnel or anything like that, it's all facilities.
It does make me feel good that every single one of our schools have a double entrance that stays locked.
Yeah.
I think that's so important and there's still many schools out there that don't have that.
Well, and unfortunately, sometimes, you know, I mean, we are, we believe in family-friendly schools, but there are also measures you have to take to help keep your kid, kids safe. So, you know, sometimes that limits, but generally, you know, we are also able with certain precautions to be able to do a lot of things too, so. Yeah. I just want to give you guys updates on those, and that's all I have for survey.
Anybody have anything else? So, do I have a motion to adjourn? Their second?
Second.
Meeting's adjourned at 3:38.